Ready? The time is 6:00 on October 5th, 2020. At this time, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Councilmember Hughes. Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, let's stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll go ahead and open up. Call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. Mr. Bitter, do we have anybody this evening that would like to speak during call to the public?
There is anyone attending that would like to speak to the council this time? Please either raise your hand, or let us know in the chat and we can unmute you.
I have a call to the public that was sent to me and I was asked to read it. Into the record. So, would you like to go ahead? Okay, it's from Gary Pronzo, who is a resident of Historic Florence, dated October 5th, 2020. "Madam Mayor, members of the town council, if you will indulge me, I would like to take a moment to point out a reoccurring problem. First, let me start by saying I appreciate the recent chip seal maintenance to some of the streets south of the Gila. However, judging by the quality of workmanship, it has become obvious that the town's chip seal specifications is either weak or perhaps nonexistent. What brings this to my attention is the lack of cleanup after the chip seal is applied to the roads. Sidewalks, intersections, and gutters remain cluttered with loose asphalt-covered aggregate for months after the job is complete. Truth be told, it never really clears away. As a suggestion, I recommend downloading the North Carolina Department of Transportation Chip Seal Best Practices Manual. This is an excellent document for evaluating the road condition, required road preparation, and chip seal application technique required to obtain the desired result. I strongly suggest that a responsible member of staff inspect the road preparation and finished product to ensure the proper application and cleanup. Respectfully, Gary Pronzo."
Thank you very much, councilmember, for reading that. And Ben, can I direct you to further look into that and address that and follow up with council?
Good thing, Mayor.
Excellent. I also wanted to share, during call to the public, we had received another letter, and I spoke with this resident, and did say that I wanted to read her letter into the record, and also follow up with staff in regards to putting this on a future agenda for a work session. It's something that we had talked about before in regards to ambulances. Says, "Dear Mayor and council, I hope this email finds you all well. I spoke with Mayor Walter, and per her request, she asked me to send an email regarding an experience that I had with not receiving ambulance service. On September 2nd, around 2:15 a.m., my husband called for an ambulance for me because I was experiencing burning in my throat and mouth, and I was having difficulty breathing. The fire department came. They had informed her husband that there was nothing they could do for her. Her husband had asked when the ambulance would be there, and he was told that it was on another call. After a while, he was again, he asked again, and was told that they didn't know if one was coming at all. My husband then said he would take me himself, and they said that it was probably a good idea. I was seen in the ER when I was there, admitted. After this incident, I called the mayor and the fire chief, and after a meeting with the fire chief, he investigated the call. He called me back and did inform me that AMR ambulance service said that the first ambulance was called out of service, and after that, there seemed to be a mix-up, according to the dispatcher. Therefore, no ambulance was sent. No person wants to hear that. I also spoke with the mayor, and I suggested that Florence should consider having their own ambulance service. Florence is a growing community, as I'm sure that you are all aware. Any amount of ambulances, three for Florence, isn't sufficient. No one wants to hear that no ambulance will be coming. All of Pinellas County is at risk with only eight ambulances to service the entire county. That is very concerning to know. I hope you all take this incit- this inspiration for the well-being of the town of Florence. Thank you for taking the time to listen, and I look forward to hearing from you. All the council did receive this email as well, and I want to say thank you to the fire chief for reaching out, but this is something that is a concern that I've expressed as well. I would like to have a future work session on this item.
Madam Mayor, who was the person that provided the comment? We need that for the record.
Pat Cargola. Is there anybody else who would like to speak, Ben?
Oh, Mayor, we do not have anyone else raising their hand or typing in chat, so I think we're good.
Okay. I know that we all care about public safety and our citizens' safety, so I appreciate you all listening. If there is nobody else for call to the public, we'll go ahead at this time and close call to the public. Item six is a public hearing and presentations. Item A is a public hearing on a major general plan amendment. This was requested by Grinder Sports Group Incorporated with permission by the property owner, Guardian Angel Holdings LLC, to amend the town of Florence's 2020 general plan to change the land use designation on approximately 357 acres from low and medium density residential and community commercial to a new category of sports-oriented mixed-use for a property that's located at the southeast corner of Judd and Felix Road, and at the southeast corner of Felix Road, and the extension of Bella Vista Road. And for the discussion, approval disapproval of resolution number 1746-20, which is a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving a major general plan amendment for case PZC 2021 MGP. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Larry Harmer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This case has come to the town through the standard major general plan annual amendment process. If you recall, March of this year, we brought to the council the calendar for the general plan, major general plan amendment process for the year. The deadline for application was April 23rd. This application was received. The appropriate packet was formulated, the 60-day. Well, I'm not sure what that was. The 60-day review was sent out to the appropriate agencies. We sent it to over two dozen agencies, including neighboring cities and towns of ADQ, Department of Environmental Quality, ADWR, Department of Water Resources, State Land Department, various agencies, the school district, et cetera. Comments back were minimal from those agencies, and what we did receive were either totally unopposed or in favor of. Planning and zoning commission on August 20th and September 3rd held public hearings to solicit input from the public regarding this application. And we did receive a few comments. They were predominantly positive. There were requests by the neighboring development of magma ranch about the potential of annexation, and we did enter into a separate conversation with representatives of their HOA to possibly move that forward. What's important for tonight is for the, or mayor council and the public to understand that this is strictly a land use designation. This in no way approves the actual Grinder's Sports application as far as the land use. That is a separate process that'll be coming back through annexation, establishment of zoning, and a development agreement that the council authorized town staff to begin negotiating. The development agreement also will include Pinellas County because of some of their participation, potential participation in this. The application, the resolution includes designation of the sports-oriented mixed-use land use for the assessor parcel numbers, as noted in your packet. Also, at request of some of the public, we did include a much more detailed location map as far as the area, as to where this is located, as it relates to the highway, the future north-south corridor, the core area of Florence, et cetera. That's available in the packet for anyone who wants to see that. It's available on the town's website under tonight's council packet meeting. Also, the language that we have put in here for the sports-oriented mixed-use, it would be included in the general plan. We actually worked this out with our general plan consultant. So this is language that has been used in similar situations around the country, and we did customize it for what we feel would work best here in Florence. We have representatives of the Grinder's group who are also representing the property owner. Kelly Stinet and Lyndon Estill are both available to answer any specific questions you may have. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'll leave it up to the council for questions and the conducting of the public hearing.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Harmer, for that introduction and providing that background. I want to say thank you because Lyndon Estill did come out to a community event this past week, and he stayed until approximately 10:15 at night, even talking and conversing with some of our residents who had questions about the project, even though that wasn't the point of why, you know, the gathering had originally occurred. So with that, I am going to open it up for council. Council, do you have any questions that you would like to ask of either of these gentlemen at this time? Or would you like me to turn it over to them to speak? All right. I don't see any questions. Mr. Estill, Mr. Stinet, would you like to say anything at this time?
Sure. Madam Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, I had a great time last week. Thank you for inviting me out to the school board meeting and meet the candidates. Had some very positive conversations with a lot of, with a lot of community members. Got to, got to answer some pretty, some pretty tough questions, but also some very personal questions about, and find out more about the town and the history and, you know, really what their sense of community really is. And for Kelly and myself, really being able to integrate back and integrate this project into the community and make it a pillar of the community and not just a shadow over the top of the community is something that's very near and dear to the purpose of why we're doing this. So I just want to say thank you for having me out, inviting me, and allowing me to, oh, to extend your evening a little too, what, too late as answering questions. I didn't, I mean, there were, you know, so many, so many great members of the community were able to ask questions and really go into detail and follow up, and I felt it would have been wrong to just cut anybody off and cut out early. So I stayed as long as, as long as people would listen to me, I guess. So, no, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. If there is no questions, I would entertain a motion at this time.
Madam Mayor, we need to open the public hearing.
I agree. At this time, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Bitter, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak at this time?
And members of the public, if you have a request to speak, please raise your hand using the function on. Madam Mayor, I do not see anyone functioning at this time.
All right. Thank you so much. With that, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Again, this has been a very long and open, transparent process, and we're looking to continue down this road. In regards to this item this evening, we need a motion.
I motion to adopt resolution 1746-20, a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving a major general plan amendment for case PZC 2021 MGP.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We are looking forward to continuing down the path. Item B is a proclamation declaring October 2020 as light the town hall purple for domestic violence awareness month. At this time, I would like to call forward Chief Wells. I had spoken with him prior about speaking to domestic violence, our community, some resources that we have available as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. Good evening, council. Just as the mayor has mentioned, October is the month that we are going to champion two great causes. Those causes are domestic violence awareness. I'm not sure if the council knows, but we typically have about 10 million cases of domestic violence nationally. What we do to go and draw attention to that is we wear a purple pin. That pin, again, increases that awareness, and it also recognizes the victims of domestic violence, continues our support, help those that have been victimized by domestic violence, in helping us to continue to go and support the programs that help them cope and eventually prevail through their victimization. Also this month, we are, you know, recognizing breast cancer awareness. And what you'll see, many of us wearing is pink. That pink symbolizes drawing attention to breast cancer. The police department, for the first time this year, we are wearing pink patches on a uniform. I'm going to turn my shoulder a little bit so you can go ahead and see that. Can you all see that patch? That is our effort at showcasing the attention to our breast cancer awareness. We are also going to be at some time this month, doing something up north and something down south, where we're going to go ahead and give our patches away for a brief donation. That donation will go ahead and be given to breast cancer awareness for the, for the town. So again, this month is to go in and draw attention to two great causes, and we hope that you and our citizens will go ahead and participate, whether that program is nationally or locally. Thanks, Mayor.
Chief Wells, while I have you on, will you also talk with our citizens about a program that we recently rolled out that could be of significant importance to victims of domestic violence, as well as other members in the community that may need the text to 911 services?
Yes, ma'am. So recently, starting in October, we just went to text 911. And what it does, it gives our citizens an opportunity, go and contact our dispatch. No longer do you have to go and utilize a telephone. You can simply go ahead and text. So we'll pick that call up and we'll go ahead and text you right back. That's one of the great programs. We also, every time we have contact with a victim of domestic violence, we provide a multitude of resources to those particular. We want to go ahead and make sure that anybody that is victimized during domestic violence gets the resources that they need to go and help them move through that particular crisis.
Right. Thank you so much. And Mr. Bitter, we also filmed a PSA approximation between the county and the town of Florence. We brought in Sheriff Mark Lamb for that.
Are you ready for it to play?
Yes, sir.
All right. No sound.
It's not playing.
I don't know how to fix that, Mayor. We certainly do have this, that will be going up on our Facebook page in a matter of minutes. I guess we could direct people there, or?
Check out the town of government, or the town of Florence government Facebook page. We have a proclamation declaring October 2020 as light town hall purple for domestic violence. If you take a ride down right by town hall, you'll see it lit up purple. Again, it's just another effort to shed light and raise awareness towards domestic violence. Thank you so much. I am sorry that didn't work. Our next agenda item this evening is a proclamation. Sorry, echo, echo. Proclamation declaring October 4th through 10th, 2020 as Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week is very important, and I know if you have a family, you want to make sure that everybody knows the safety plan to get out of your house and the meeting point at this time. I'm going to call forward Chief David Strayer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mayor, did you wish for? Normally, we read it together, but this year it's different.
You know, I would like you to read it, if that's okay?
Aye.
Perfect.
So whereas the town of Florence is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Florence, and whereas fires are serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the location where people are at greater risk from fire, and whereas home fires kill more than 2,630 people in the United States in 2017, according to National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 357,000 home fires. And whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, where fire departments responded to more than 173,200 annually between 2013 and 2017. And whereas two out of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of those fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas more than half the reported non-fatal home cooking fire injury occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas children under five face the highest risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking and being burned in a cooking fire. Whereas Florence residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keeping a three-foot kid-free zone around the cooking areas and keeping anything that can hit fire away from stove tops. And whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Florence's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protective education, protection education, education, education. And whereas city of Florence residents are responsive to public education majors and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety through fire, especially in their homes. And whereas 2020 Fire Prevention Week's theme is Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen. It effectively serves as a reminder to stay alert and use caution when cooking and reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Therefore, it is proclaimed in Florence that month of, the week of October 4th through the 5th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week, also throughout the state. And all residents of Florence are urged to check their kitchen for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2020 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Florence's fire and emergency services. So Mayor, the theme this week is cooking fires. Can't emphasize it enough, as a lot of our fires come from there, from, from a problem in the kitchen. A lot of people don't realize how many kids are hurt every year of, say, for instance, it's simple, sometimes it's as simple as turning the handles in on your stoves. So a young kid can't reach up and pull that down. It's, you know, some very tragic things that happen. So just it's a safety reminder to the community with this being Fire Prevention Week and emphasizing kitchen fires this year. But that's all I have, Mayor and council.
Chief Strayer, thank you so much, and I can definitely appreciate the kitchen fire aspect. I actually ended up calling our 911 one time because there was a kitchen fire going on, and it happened, and I'm sharing this story just to bring some awareness forward. It happened in our oven. We had turned on the self-cleaner, and it was after Thanksgiving. And my middle son had lost fire at the time and said, "Mom, look, it looks like one of those gas fireplaces." Well, it started a fire inside of the oven. And, you know, just make sure, clean out that grease if anything splatters over the holidays and keep a watch out.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Our next item is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is resolution 1751-20. This is adoption of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, authorizing the town to accept tribal gaming funds from the Gila River Indian in the amount of $49,549 for mobile data computers. Item B is resolution number 1752-20, which is an adoption of the resolution of the town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, supporting the application to the Gila River Indian community on behalf of the Pinellas County Historical Society in the amount of $7,200. Item C is approval of the lease agreement between the town of Florence and the Bureau of Land Management for 200 acres around Postonview. Item D is approval to accept FFY 2020 Homeland Security Grant Program Subrecipient Agreement 200306-01 from Arizona Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $42,180 for the Florence Public Safety Interoperable Communications Project. Item E, approval of the eight returning grant applications received thus far in the amount of $39,851. Item F is approval of accepting the register of demands ending August 31st, 2020 in the amount of $1,512,618.99. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda. Is there anybody who would like anything removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
Motion that we approve. Oh, go ahead, whoever that was.
I'll make a motion to approve a consent agenda as read.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And that motion carries. Item eight, new business. Eight A is discussion approval, disapproval of a contract with Holbrook Asphalt LLC to clean, prepare and install HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Advanced Performance Pavement Preservation Treatment for CIP T69 pavement preservation in an amount not to exceed $293,466.89. This includes $255,188.60 plus a 15% contingency of $38,278.29. At this time, I will call forward Mr. Chris Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. During recent updates to the council, I had made statements that last year we were unable to reach a contract price for this type of product. And so we spent last year researching viable alternatives. In the end, we really were not able to find any viable alternatives. We, we met with other communities, we interviewed other communities, we spoke to them about their products, we went and visited some of their projects, their neighborhoods, and essentially, there is no alternative product to this, even with the price increase from the last contract to this contract, the town feels very confident that this is still the best product. There was never a doubt it was the best product. We just weren't very happy with the price at that time. We weren't happy with the price increase. And so, working with the town manager, we decided to take one year off of our aggressive program and research to see there were any other opportunities. As I stated, we've not find a viable alternative for the price. Similar products that come in at a dollar fifty, a dollar sixty, a dollar seventy, not have the same performance characteristics. I want to be clear, we're not choosing to stay with this product because other neighborhoods in Anthem have this product. The opposite, actually. We are choosing this product because it was the best product previously and it is still the best product. It presents the best value when you look at the amount of time that we have. We have over eight years in parcels four and six. People fly out from around the United States to see our parcel four and six because it is one of the longest running projects in all of Arizona and all the West. So, believe it or not, people come out all across the United States to see our parcels four and six to see what almost 10-year-old HA5 looks like. So with that, we are again confident to stay with this product and it presents the best overall value. That is how public works determines things, not necessarily on a low bid, but on a best value. But this is the most recent contract that was bid, I think, in the last, well, it's pre-COVID, so it's probably nine to 10 months old. This is the most current contract within the state with Holbrook Asphalt.
Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Salas?
Yes, is this, is this re asphalt or chip seal?
No, this is the same product that was used for all the years in Anthem. This is not a chip seal product. This is again, a, it is, it is not a asphalt sealant. This is not an emulsion product. This is a much thicker product. This is what is referred to in the industry as a mineral bond product. So there's a certain amount of material on there, let's say about, somewhere about three sixteenths of an inch of actual mineral bond material. So some people view that as a wearing course. What it ultimately provides, Vice Mayor Anderson, it's the same product that was used, I believe, in front of your house. It's the same product used in front of the mayor's house. It's that same very dark black material that seems to seal in the asphalt and so that it protects it from ultraviolet rays, but ultimately it lasts longer than any of the other products on the market.
I think that's what was used all throughout our community, if I'm not mistaken.
Absolutely. There's been no chip seal in Anthem. All of Anthem has been done with HA5 except for the higher speed roads. The higher speed roads have been done with micro seal that was done through regional pavement most recently, but companies like Southwest Flurry and others. Through all the neighborhoods, Anthem has had HA5 because of the pavement is in newer and better condition. That is the proper maintenance product for that. It is different. So we, we evaluate whether a road is going to have a micro seal, HA5, it is going to have a chip seal, is going to have a edge mill or a full mill or full reconstruction. All these products have their purpose and is necessarily better than the other. There are just applications that we use each for.
Mayor. Go ahead, council member.
I just wanted to bring up that I feel the same way that Gary fails about the application process. I know last time that it was done in front of my home, there was tire marks from individuals who crossed the barrier and they carried the product over sidewalks and I felt like that it wasn't just residents. This is people who are working on the project. I know we had discussed this last time, but I want to make sure that going forward that that is some of the cleanup and the, and the respect for our community. I want to make sure that that's carried through in this project as well. So I just want to make sure that the application and follow-through is, is done in a respectful way to, to individuals' property as well as common property.
I feel the same way and since, I believe, actually, since the complaints that were made on the actual, we're not talking chip seal, we're talking HA5. We have been assigning essentially a full-time employee to all of our maintenance projects. So we have a person out there from approximately 6:15 in the morning, all the way till almost 2:30 in the afternoon, every day, kind of monitoring a big portion of that product. So we have a staff member. A staff member out there essentially directing the entire project and then our superintendent makes, makes throughout the day as well. We're definitely on top of these issues. I hope we didn't have more issues, but at least we're, we're dedicating more staff time towards them.
That's great to hear. It's just frustrating when I hear the same things happening to, you know, Gary and what they're witnessing downtown that I had also seen and witnessed myself in years prior. So I just want to make sure that we do not just have the staff there, but there is some type of accountability on their end as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mayor.
I'll just follow up with Kristen, our council member Larson. I guess, I mean, to me, it doesn't matter if it's chip seal or whatever is being put down. I would hope that when we're spending $300,000 with someone that they would want to make sure that they did a good job because they'd want us to hire them again. And whether you have the best product or not, if you do really bad workmanship, we're not going to hire you again. And so I think that whoever did our chip seal might need to know that information that if you can't be clean and, and do your job and earn your check and at the standards that our town has, you're in jeopardy of not being hired again. So I just echo what Gary Ponzo said and what Kristen Larson says, you know, having, having our staff there to follow up on them is great, but at the very end, maybe you need to go out there and verify that everything is to the standards that council and the town expect. And if it's not, then they don't get final payment until it is.
All right, Mr. Salas, did you have anything?
Not at this point. I have nothing to add.
All right, well, I, I know we've all had those conversations, so I appreciate, and it seems as if we're all consistent and on the same page. With that, we need a motion.
I motion that we approve the contract with Holbrook Asphalt LLC to clean, prepare and install HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Advanced Performance Pavement Preservation Treatment for CIP T-69 pavement preservation in amount not to exceed $293,466.89 plus the 15% contingency for a total of 38, oh, contingency of 38,278.29.
Second.
I think I read that right.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Item nine is our manager's report.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, of course, you have my written manager's report in the binder, and as you know, I typically don't read through that in case you have questions. One thing that I wanted to highlight tonight is something that the, the mayor mentioned earlier, which is text to nine one one coming to Florence. This has been something that has been worked on for a couple of years to get to this point, and through all of the different PSAPs in the county or the nine one one centers in the county and including our nine one one center that we have here in Florence. The primary use to text to nine one one includes when an individual is deaf, hard of hearing, or has a speech disability, they have the ability to contact nine one one. Secondarily, in situations where it's not safe for an individual to place a voice call, and thirdly, during a medical emergency that renders a person unable to speak. How do you dial nine one one in terms of a text? You simply enter the numbers nine, one, and one into the field at, at the top of the text where, where you would enter someone's phone number or someone's name that, that's in your contacts. One of the things that we want to encourage is when you text to nine one one, we're not able to track where that text comes from. So it's important that you provide your exact location and the nature of the emergency, then push the send button. Just putting nine one one and send is not providing enough information. That's one of the drawbacks to using text to nine one one is we have to provide context. So one more time, please share your location and the nature of your emergency. Either a call will come back to you or a text will come back to you. Please make sure that you avoid using text jargon or abbreviations and please spell things out because some folks like me might not understand text jargon as, as well as, as young folks do. Photos and videos cannot be provided by text nine one one. So that's, that's an important thing to share. Please do not send video, audio or, or photography through nine one one. And lastly, we want to encourage folks to not text to nine one one while driving. Not only is that against the law in Arizona, but it's tremendously unsafe. So if, if you do need to text to nine one one and you're behind the wheel, please pull off the road, safe distance off the road, stop your vehicle and then text. So Mayor, thank you for bringing that up earlier, but I wanted to share that to not only the council, but the folks in the public watching this evening. As part of my manager's report, you'll notice that there's another substantial update from the Community Services Department in terms of the list of programs being provided, not only at the library and, and community center, but the senior center as, as well as some forthcoming events. One of the, one of the things that you'll see in here is that our first drive-in movie was shown last Friday, I'm not Friday, last Saturday, and I don't know if anyone had a chance to partake in that, but I know that's something that council had requested and, and we were able to satisfy that, that request. One of the things, and then I'll be quiet, that I wanted to bring to council and the public's attention because there have been some questions recently asked of staff regarding what is the status of the Arizona State Prison Complex. And so I've shared a write-up with you in terms of the status of that prison complex. We've seen a consistent lowering of the numbers at that particular historic complex, and now the north unit is completely empty at the state prison complex. There are still prisoners in the south unit, the north unit, I'm not, I'm sorry, the south unit, the east unit and, and those facilities, but, but not, not in the north unit. In addition, I think that there's some, some good information in the final section, which involves state revenues from the various funds and what we've seen in terms of COVID and impacts with respect to those revenues, because that's something that obviously we'll be coming and talking to council about after the second quarter, with your request to come back after the second quarter and, and report on, on our revenues and how that relates to our existing budget. The last thing I wanted to touch on is the eco station. So the eco station is being designed. At this time, we have an architect onboard and they're working on a design. I just received an update from Chris today. And here in the near future, we're going to provide, Larry's department in particular is going to provide a design charrette where some of the draft designs for the eco station and the utility yard will be able to be shared with the public because that project will not go through the typical design review and planning and zoning process that, that other developments go through as a, as a government facility. But we still want the ability to give folks opportunity to provide feedback and, and comment on that particular design. Coupled with that is the status of the existing dumpsters and recycle station that are at Heritage Park. That particular area has been a source of consternation for the last couple of years and seems to be getting worse, or has seemed to be getting worse over the last few months in terms of illegal dumping and folks leaving large pieces of furniture, appliances, et cetera, out in the parking lot. Based on some of the information that we've received, several things have occurred. If you've had an opportunity to drive by there, signage has been placed, a police cruiser has been placed. We now have a camera that focuses on that area and have been able to step up enforcement regarding illegal dumping. And I will tell you, it has helped. However, I noticed today, when I came into the office, I drove over and looked at those containers as I've been doing the last few weeks. Now we have folks taking garbage and dumping it in the recycling bins. The recycling bins this morning were all almost completely full of garbage. So we would encourage the public to use the recycling bins for recycling and the garbage containers for garbage. Madam Mayor, that's, that's what I have for the report this evening.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any members of council that have any question regarding our manager's report this evening?
I do.
Okay, proceed.
Frank, could you just give us an update? I know that Ben was asked this question earlier via social media, but for those that aren't on social media, if you could give us an update on the opening of the library, the fitness center, things like that. The community is anxious to get those things opened and would like to know when we plan on reopening those.
I'm actually not the right guy to answer that. We have a COVID task force, which Ben and Cliff and Catherine are the members of that. In terms of the library and community center, as long as we're leasing that to the county and Paradigm Labs to do the COVID testing, we can't open that facility because they're using most of that facility for that operation. And there's a significant amount of disinfection that, that's required as a part of utilizing that facility before, after, and, and during when that's going on. Ben and the COVID task force, I'm sure can provide a better answer to, to council tomorrow with respect to the fitness center. Under the current guidelines provided by the governor, our facility is so small and it has so, such a little amount of equipment in it. If we were to follow the governor's guidelines in, in terms of decreasing our number of customers to satisfy those, we'd have two or three people in the building. So it simply doesn't make financial sense to open a facility and to have to staff that facility with part-time employees with the limited capacity that it would have to, to be able to be utilized by the public, if that makes sense. I'd hope I got that correct with, with Hezekiah and his team.
I have a question. Proceed.
One of the things that I had asked the last council was request more information about the COVID cases that are accurately about the COVID cases that are accurately happening at the prisons and how that differentiates from our general public. And I haven't heard back from that. And I think that ties in directly with what Michelle was asking about and truly what our numbers are. Can you explain where we're at in that?
Yes, Ben has done quite a bit of work, as you know, from the beginning to the current. I talked to Ben as recent as this morning, and he's continuing to have the same problems in terms of incomplete data, data that doesn't jibe with other data we've received. I'm not sure there's a whole lot the town can do to put pressure on anyone to provide more accurate data or more data than what we're providing. Ben's utilizing the data that we receive and he's reporting it back to us in the most comprehensive way that he can. This morning, he was able to provide information to us based on the statewide cases, the number of tests, and what that means from a percentage perspective. And it appears that we are much better off than we were a few weeks ago and we're kind of holding steady in terms of the number of cases as it relates to the number of tests.
Well, I appreciate that and I appreciate the hard work that Ben puts into that. I know that I'm very frustrated and the public's very frustrated about not having accurate information. I would ask Tara to possibly sign on to another petition. I know that other prison communities are dealing with the same issue. This is long overdue. I'm frustrated. I'm not happy with that result. So whoever we have to keep pushing to, I will. I know that there was certain days where we had spiked and I'm getting direct information from county that those are mostly from the prison and yet in the newspaper and what is that or that we're receiving. That this is general public relation. That's not okay when I've got being told both sides. How are we to make decisions when we can't have accurate information? And I wish COVID would go away, but I don't see that happening immediately. So I'm going to do what we can today through what we can control today. So I think that we need to take further action on this. I think that we need to reach out and start a petition. I think that we need to, the county has this information. It's very simple for them to pull up the address in which somebody resides to find that data. It doesn't have to be where we know that personal information, but it is easy to combine that into a data field and get that information as to what's happening in the prisons and what's not.
I will ask Ben to reach out to the mayor. I wish that there was more that we can do, but there's not much we can do from a staff perspective other than ask for information and hope that we receive it. And Ben goes above and beyond by not just looking and seeing what's reported, but actually contacting the correctional institutions and asking for information directly from them. So he's doing everything he possibly can.
And do appreciate Ben's hard work. Thank you.
And council member Larson, we are on the same page. This has been an ongoing battle and issue that has gone all the way up to the governor's office when he originally had only provided information by county. We were able to get him to break it down and Department of Health by zip code. But you're correct, it's still not accurate. It's still not okay. We do have good correspondence with our representatives all the way up to the governor's office. What we can do, we've partnered before in the past with other municipalities and mayors, and we have that conversation going out. And when they have another letter going out, I'll definitely join on to that letter. And if we want to take a proactive stance, we can also have our council, if Ben, Mr. Bitter, would drop the letter or I'd be happy to drop a letter, and then we can all sign it to, again, push for those numbers to be released. So this way they understand we're serious. And this is information that is needed in our community to continue to guide decisions.
I agree. If we can get that, that'd be great.
No, Mr. Billingsley, I did have one question on the manager's report. So in regards to the gym, I understand, you know, it would only be able to facilitate two to three people at a time, but do you know what our usage is in the facility at any given time?
I don't. And please don't quote me on the two or three. I know that it was a low number. Hezekiah gave me a report a few weeks ago. I don't remember what it was, but I think it was less than five under the governor's regulations, unless they changed. I can have Hezekiah get some information out to you with respect to historical usage and what the governor's regulations would mean in terms of the exercise facility.
Okay, I'd like to see that just because if we can find a way to even open it up for a smaller number, I think that would be a benefit and a service to our community. And then also I wanted to reemphasize that we do have some creative programs going on with our library. They still have the curbside. There's still a plethora of online resources. I hope our community will take advantage of those. And I also look forward to our library opening up because I enjoy wandering aimlessly through the stacks of books because sometimes I pick out things that normally I wouldn't and the same with my children.
I will say that the drive-up library has been a hit. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but they moved it over here to the pullouts on the Main Street extension. And from the time the library opens until the library closes, there's at least two cars parked out here all day long and they cycle them through. It's quite an amazing process to watch. They're very efficient. If you haven't had a chance, maybe give Hezekiah a call and look and see how they take those orders, how they stage those orders in one of the conference rooms, and they schedule those pickups at different times and then they exchange books. It's quite an operation. It's like Henry Ford invented it. It's pretty cool.
Thank you. Our next item this evening is our department reports. Is there any member of council that has a question in regards to the department reports? Our next item. Did I hear somebody start? Okay, our next item is called to the public. This is our second call to the public this evening. Mr. Benjamin Bitter, is there anybody that would like to speak at this time?
Again, members of the public, if you do have a request to speak, please raise your hand at this time and we can unmute you. Do you see Stephanie Joyner has a request?
Absolutely. Good evening, Ms. Joyner. How are you tonight?
Good evening. I'm great. How are you? Can everybody hear me?
We can hear you. How is everything at the Penale County Historical Museum?
It's going really great. So mayor, vice mayor, council members, my name is Stephanie Joyner, and I'm the executive director of the Penale County Historical Museum. I want to thank town council for approving PCHS Museum's Hela River Indian Community Grant. This grant funding covers a much-needed upgrade to the museum's burglar and fire security systems, which will enhance safety for museum visitors, volunteers, staff, the surrounding community, as well as the fire department personnel and police officers who respond to emergency calls. I would also like to thank town council for approving the Florence Returning Stronger Grant. PCHS applied to have utilities reimbursed, and I was disappointed to hear that the museum did not qualify because of our nonprofit status. Other towns have publicized that they are using CARES Act funding to support nonprofits, including utility costs. Thank you.
Thank you very much for speaking this evening. Just making a note, I wanted to follow up on something. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time?
Again, if there are any other members of the public that wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. Mayor, I do not see anyone else asking to speak at this time.
All right, thank you so much. At this time, this is our second call to the council for current events only. I will start with council member Hughes.
Thank you very much. I wanted to give a shout out to, I'm thankful that we started the Returning Stronger Grant and that we're giving out $39,851. And I hope that that will continue. That's all I have. And I'm up here on the dais by myself. Hopefully this time we'll see more people. Thanks.
Excellent. Council member Larson.
I just wanted to say that I am so happy that we had the drive-in movie. I felt like there was a huge sense of community and had so much fun sitting in the back of a pickup and watching the movie underneath my stars all night. And had lots of fun. So I'm hoping that we have more events like that in the future, and I love how creative our Parks and Rec has been during all of this. And I'm really appreciative that they listened and actually did the drive-in movie. Yay.
Council member Cortez. Council member Cortez. Mr. Bitter, is she still on? I don't.
I do not see council member Cortez on anymore.
Okay, thank you. Council member Wall.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Vice mayor.
Yes, I have several things. One, just to follow through with what the town manager was talking about, 911. We had an incident this week where 911 was out of service for 45 minutes. And that's very concerning to me. I did talk to the police chief and I know he's trying to get to the bottom of it, but we need to make the county aware that that's just not acceptable. We can't have 911 calling out. That needs to be a triple redundant system. Any kind of failure for five minutes, especially 45 minutes is unacceptable. On the policy side, I do want to thank Chris for his.
I'm not sure.
What was that? I want to thank Chris for his participation with the planning and zoning. He came and gave planning and zoning the ADOT traffic plan that he presented to the council. The planning and zoning people were very interested in that because they wanted to make sure that our streets are quiet enough and all that. So thanks to Chris for that. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight was, you know, we try to take these grants from the HeLa Indian Reservation. I take the grants for granted, but I think we should somehow recognize and thank those people. So can we do that in some way? You know, some kind of proclamation, you know, we could maybe have Karen, are you still our Indian rep? Okay, you know, have them present that at their meeting, some kind of a letter of appreciation because they do this each year and, you know, they give us quite a bit of money. Another thing, just to mention, last item. I had a new newspaper laying in my mailbox this week, the Independent. Did everybody get a copy of that? Glad to see us have another newspaper in town. The Grindr does a very good job, but it's always nice to have more avenues of communication. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council member Cortez was disconnected. If she pops back on, we will call on her. I wanted to just say thank you first for, you know, our planning and zoning. They had gone through the process with Grinders, and that's how it ended up before us here this evening as well. There's always a very public process that things move through, and that's how things happen in the town of Florence. So I want to say thank you for everybody who has participated, remaining engaged, reached out, asked questions, and involved themselves. We did have some questions in regards to Mayor Copas having their state of the town. And they said, hey, you know, Florence had their state of the town last year in October. When are we having that again? So I wanted to just take a moment just to give a little bit of an update. We are still planning on having a state of the town. However, with COVID and everything happening at this time, it will probably be something either done creatively or more towards the end of the year. But we have had some great things happen in the town of Florence. And I'm just going to take a moment just to highlight some of those. You know, we've had infill building that has happened downtown. We haven't had that type of growth in 10 years. We have had new plots approved for development. Our county partnership is strong. We have two mid-rise buildings that are being built in Florence right now. I've had real estate agents reach out, people that have been purchasing homes, and they say, what's being built in Florence, you know, over by the Catholic Church? County complex, Penale County Emergency Management will be housed there. There'll be some county offices there. Some current jobs will be relocated over as well as new jobs will be added. We have been improving our high-speed data, our fiber. As we even approved tonight, we have some new roads, resurfacing, repaving. Our sewer treatment plants, and we've even brought over our K-8 students this past year to give them a tour and made an entire academic day about it with the Florence K-8 kiddos with our water recharge facilities. We continue to grow in business permits. Over the past four years, we've had 878 business licenses and we currently have 106 brick and mortar businesses with more that are coming in. On our Main Street, we've already had, I believe it's four properties that have sold, and that's since the pandemic has started. And we have anything coming in, and this is just from talking to the people that have purchased or in the process of purchasing, from an event space with an arcade inside, Panini and coffee shop, a antique mall with penny candy. So we have a lot of great things that are coming into our community as well. Our planning, we continue with our active transportation plan, our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, our regional transportation plan, the Safe Routes to School, and we're continuing with our strategic plan that currently is for 2017 to 2022. That was our five-year plan. And then celebrating, we have our Halloween event. And this year, Halloween is going to look a little bit different. This past Saturday at the drive-in movie, it was really neat because they had a Kahoot game that was played and they talked about when was the first Halloween event in Florence? Where was it held? What did it look like? This year's Halloween event is going to have a component of in-person driving through on Main Street as well as a virtual costume contest. So I hope everybody takes an opportunity to engage. And, you know, our other signature events that we have grown have been the Junior Prada and Rodeo, the Christmas on Main with the Jingle Bell Jog following up the next day, or Make a Difference Day. I'm so sorry. Who is that?
Brent. Brent's having trouble downtown.
Okay.
Trying to reconnect. Trent's trying to get everybody back on.
Okay, I'm still on, obviously, correct? Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I know that it still says you're live, so I'm guessing that means you're good.
I'll try just these last few. Our Historic Home Tour, which we have won awards for. The Road to Country Thunder, this year we kicked off right before COVID closed us down with Florence Music Festival. Our Independence Day celebrations. We're looking forward to the first arts and culture festival as well as we have our Veterans Memorial. Some of the areas that the town of Florence has been shining in and has earned recognitions has been the number one safest city in Arizona, the number one best suburb to buy a house in the Phoenix area, the number one best place for young professionals in Penale County. in the Phoenix area, the number one best place for young professionals in Penale County, the number one best place to retire in Arizona, the number 10 best retirement communities, Anthem at Merrill Ranch, and we are a premier emergency services agency provider. This is all with the hard work from our council, both current and past. If this foundation hasn't been laid, then we wouldn't be continuing on forward in that path.
Really here to talk about the general plan. We have questions or comments from the public about the general plan amendment.
I also want to say thank you to.
I have not seen.
Our staff.
We're getting some strange feedback.
Yes, sir, we are. All right.
Absolutely. Tiffany Simmons, and I'm at 13112 East Astor Lane in Florence. I'm in Magma Ranch Vista's.
So if you're in the audience and you're wondering what we're listening to right now, this is the planning and zoning meeting.
Mine, I think, is just kind of more an overall. This is the first call that I'm joining and we just knew. I'm just.
Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
I can, and I believe that we can conclude call to the council because we have some additional interruption going on and everybody has spoken. And let's go ahead and adjourn to executive session.
I'm going to motion adjourn to executive session.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for participating.